Good afternoon. I'm Doug Shipman, Atlanta City Council President, calling to order this meeting as regularly scheduled with the Atlanta City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd. Happy Labor Day to everyone. Hope you had a good, long weekend. I would like to ask the clerk to call the opening roll.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of council. We have Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post Two at Large.
Here.
Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post Three at Large.
Present.
Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District One.
Here.
Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District Three. Councilmember Jason Dozer, District Four.
Present.
Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District Five. Councilmember Alex Wan, District Six. Councilmember Howard Shook, District Seven. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District Eight.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Hillis, District Nine. Councilmember Andrea O'Boone, District Ten.
Present.
Councilmember Marcy Koller Overstreet, District Eleven.
Present.
Councilmember Antonia Lewis, District Twelve. Mr. President, we do have a quorum of members present.
Councilwoman Bond is here as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. If there are not any changes or additions to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilwoman Wan, seconded by Councilwoman Bond. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the agenda? Hearing none, we do this unanimous consent without objection, any objection. Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the agenda.
Twelve VAs, zero NAs.
Twelve VAs, zero NAs, the motion to adopt the agenda carries. Next, we'll move to the invocation. We do not have a guest to provide an invocation today, so we'll be taking a moment of silence. But first, let me pause to ask if there are any remembrances, Councilwoman O'Boone.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer condolences to the family of the late Dr. Booker Poe, who was one of the first African-American pediatricians in the city of Atlanta, having attended Maharry Medical School and going on to practice medicine for nearly 60 years. Many of those years were spent on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. The Doctor's Memorial Park, which was named by the Honorable C.T. Martin, does have many of the late doctors who practiced at Southwest Hospital, Holy Family Hospital, mentioning he now joins those with Dr. Otis W. Smith, Dr. John Hall, Dr. William Bland, Dr. Jenkins, Albert Davis, Jewel Pate Borders, Clinton Warner, and so many more African-American doctors. Please keep Attorney Brian Poe and Dr. Jan Poe in your prayers as they funeralize their father on September 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilwoman Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge the passing of Ken Roskoff. Ken was an avid cyclist. He was an avid advocate in the cycling community. Him and his partner Bruce Hagan had a law firm, Hagan-Roskoff, which is known colloquially in the bike community as Bike Law. So if you've been hit by a car on a bike, that's who you go to. And I've gotten to know them over the years. He has been an avid donor to propel ATL, the Atlanta Bicycle Coalition, served on their board for many years. Unfortunately, he lost his life doing a thing that he loved the most, and that's riding his bike. He was killed by a motorist indicator a couple of weeks ago, and his loss is being felt profoundly across the cycling community here in Atlanta, and want to make sure we acknowledge him and his advocacy throughout our city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to talk about the passing of Mr. Vic Bolton, who was a longtime Atlanta resident. He had just an outstanding business career as the founder and partner in probably about 20 businesses over the last 40 years, a native of Atlanta that went to Old Northside High School, I'm sorry, Westminster High School, where he was a standout student, athlete, went to college on a full-ride football scholarship, but turned toward his academics and business and finished part of his career as a leader at the World Changes Ministry, who was funeralized on this past Saturday. So just wanted to uplift the Bolton family and all of their friends and loved ones. He'll be dearly missed.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bakhtiari.
Yeah, thank you. Echoing Councilmember Dozier's sentiments as well, and it has not lost, I think, on any of us. That almost all happened to you as well a few weeks ago. And I also would like to just ask us to include in our prayers Brent Hines and his family. For those who didn't know Brent, he was a singer and guitarist in a really well-known band in Atlanta called Mastodon. I doubt many of my colleagues have heard their music, but he was an East Atlanta, Southeast Atlanta staple and someone that, in true Atlanta tradition, Atlanta tradition, that a lot of people had a hand in raising and was really truly a product of the community and someone that I grew up listening to in Atlanta. And he lost his life the other week at a dangerous intersection that includes a state highway and was killed on his motorcycle. So if we could please keep him and his family in our prayers as well, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to remember Dr. Bhagrat Majmadar. Dr. Majmadar was a pillar of the Indian community in Atlanta. He was also a professor since 1971 at Emory University in pathology and at the School of Medicine. He conducted over 350 weddings in Atlanta as a Sanskrit scholar and as a Hindu priest, including my own wedding. And Dr. Majmadar's wife, Uma Majmadar, is a very well-known scholar of theology who earned her doctorate at Emory University. I would like to extend my condolences to the family and to all of those in the community. Any others today? With those, and with those unnamed, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I'd like to invite Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to come forward, and all of those who are here for the recognition of Ayanna Victoria Matthews, please join
I believe we're also joined by our esteemed Council General of Japan. Hello, how are you doing? Good to see you. Yo, yes, just get in where you fit in. Hey, how are you doing? Hello. Hey, how are you? How are you doing, sir? It's good to see you. Hey, how are you doing? Good to see you. How are you doing?
Good, how are you? Thank you very much, I appreciate this.
No, it's my pleasure. That smells so funny. Well, I want to say good afternoon to everyone. It is a real pleasure to be here to present a proclamation to an outstanding Atlantian, someone who has had a global impact of just, you know, in their, in the development of their person and, of course, of the various businesses and relationships that they've been able to manage. And so I am very, very excited to present a proclamation in recognition of Ms. Ayanna Victoria Matthews, whereas Ayanna Victoria Matthews is a proud native of Atlanta, Georgia, that was born at Grady Memorial Hospital, Grady baby, born in the old Fourth Ward, and grew up in the Bankhead neighborhoods, where her upbringing instilled a deep love of community and service, whereas a graduate of the Academy of Mathematics and Science at Benjamin Elijah May's High School, class of 1997. Ayanna's strong educational foundation propelled her toward a lifelong commitment to civic engagement, cultural exchange, and global leadership. We need to stuck together. And whereas with more than 25 years of experience as a cultural consultant and international business strategist, Ayanna was proudly represented in Atlanta on the global stage, fostering international partnerships through her work with the Japan American Society of Georgia, collaborating closely with the Council General of Japan in Atlanta, and participating in the Bilateral Chambers Committee to strengthen the cross-cultural ties. And whereas her professional journey began with her studies at the Chiba University and services in Japan through the Japan Exchange and Teaching Program, there with led a youth-focused cultural workshop, the Miyagi Prefectorate, laying the foundation for her career and dedicated bridging communities across borders. And today, through her Gardner Matthews Global Management, Ayanna continues to advance global initiatives, advising businesses in strategic marketing, expansion of the international event planning while maintaining leadership roles with organizations, including the Japan American Association of South Carolina, the World Affairs Council of Charleston, and the Trident United Way Marketing Advisory Council. And now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the members of Atlanta City Council, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Atlanta, hereby proclaim and commend Ayanna Victoria Matthews for her outstanding contributions to the community development, cultural exchange, and global engagement, and extend our heartfelt gratitude in representing Atlanta's spirit of service and leadership abroad. Therefore, I have set my hand and have caused the seal of the city of Atlanta to be herein to affixed. Congratulations, Ms. Matthews. As they say in late-night television, but wait, there's more. I'd like to ask His Excellency if he'd like to make, say a word? You sure? You must, you must. No, you hold it.
Well, thank you so much for the, I'm a constable of Japan in Atlanta, and I do really appreciate Ayanna San's contribution to the enhancement and the promotion of the bilateral relations between Japan and the United States, and in particular, Southeast United States. She's always so supportive to our activities, and that is why I'm very glad to be here to join the celebration, to the proclamation for Ayanna San. So congratulations once again.
Does anyone else she'd like to speak?
She wants to speak.
No, she's going to speak.
Yeah.
Any of our membership? Councilmember Hillis.
I just wanted to deliver a few quick words that while I'm just now getting to know Ms. Matthews and her work, I can say that anyone who is a daughter of someone I know as Ambassador Gardener and who refer to Ms. Reynolds as Mama Reynolds, has had quite an excellent upbringing, and we just thank you and your mothers and Ms. Reynolds and everyone else who's up here's contributions to our cities. Thank you so much.
What makes Atlanta special are wonderful ladies like this and gentlemen who absolutely contribute in so many ways, including internationally. And so the contributions that we make, that you make across the globe, make Atlanta the special place that it is. Just last week, I was with the Council General at the Sister City Proclamation, where I gave a proclamation to the city of Fukuoka.
Very good.
And the pronunciation passed. I am so glad. And it was a lovely presentation highlighting the, in that incredible relationship that we have had as sister cities, and what you have personally done for us is just outstanding. So congratulations, well deserved.
Ms. Reynolds?
Oh, you don't, oh, I didn't see you, Mom.
Well, I would make this short and sweet. I'm the goodwill ambassador of sin of all the Red Cross and the Gambia. I'm so proud of my daughter. She's been like this all her life. So I want to thank everyone, and I appreciate everything, and God bless and speed. Okay, thank you, Council. Thank you. Thank you.
That's the boss of Northwestern.
Councilwoman Bond, I don't know about that, but I just want to let my goddaughter Ayanna know how proud I am of her and all the accomplishments that she has done, what she's still done, and what she will continue to do. And I just want to thank Councilwoman Barnes and the City Council for recognizing what she has done. Thank you all so much. God bless.
Well, no, we need to hear from the woman of the hour. This is your day, and the microphone is yours. Ms. Matthews.
I just, I'm so moved right now because my passion and what drives me is international relations. I started studying Spanish. Japan is what put me on the map, because as a black woman speaking such a unique language such as Japanese, going to a Japanese university at the age of 19 years old was unheard of back when I went there. But I come from a great place, and you see, this is only half of my army that has supported me. The other half is in different countries across this globe. I have been blessed. This has been so long that I've been waiting for this. And I know this is not the big, it's not a big deal as far as on a global scale, but to receive this from my city. I love Atlanta. This is my home. This will always be my hometown. And we have a lot to offer that we have shared, not only with our cross-cultural unity with Japan, but I represent the Latinos here in this city, I represent the Africans in this city, I represent the Arabs in this city, because all of them, this entire world, they started embracing me right here in my hometown. So what I bring to the world is my culture, my family, and my love for diversity, and for all of us to be able to participate globally and be successful and make money while doing so, and to do it well, and to look good while doing it, and to proceed and exceed further than we did the year before. So to be able to receive this high honor bestowed by the city. Thank you so much, Terrence, for backing me to get this. Thank you, Michael Julian Bond, for issuing it. Had no idea Ms. Norwood would be here today. And for all of the incoming council members, thank you so much. It's such an honor and a pleasure to be here to receive this award, and I will continue to move forward, so watch me. Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll do what the great gymnastics says we ought, is what the council does best is take a picture.
That's right.
So just step up here.
Come up.
Everybody, come up. Can't see the picture. Camera's not in the picture. Get up, shorter picture. Three, two, one. In.
Ms. Reynolds.
Ms. Reynolds.
Come here.
Yeah.
I messed up.
While the Council General is still in here.
Yes.
I wanted to mention the lovely presents that we have just gotten from the sister city of Fukuoka, and they are a wonderful fan, which in our southern heat, we can certainly enjoy using, and a beautiful case for down. So it is an absolutely exquisite present from our sister city, and thank you, Council General, and thank you, sister city.
Yes, we had a wonderful visit. Thank you all. Next, we will move to remarks from the public. I'd like to remind everybody that if you signed up, you'll have up to two minutes unless you have yielded time or have, unless you've received yielded time from someone else on the list, you can't yield from the podium. So first today, we have Madre Lofton. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I am Madre Lofton, the organizing director for Georgia Federation of Public Service Employees. I bring you greetings on behalf of our president, Ms. Jennifer Saunders. Please join me in congratulating the following employees and FPSC members. Chastity Ellington, Department of Watershed. Sergeant Randolph, Fire Department. Major Fred Watson, Police Department. And Lakeisha Coley, Finance Department. Each of their children was awarded an FPSC College Scholarship. We are able to award more scholarships in other Atlanta-area jurisdictions because we had greater access to employees. We remain concerned about the city of Atlanta and its HR department's closed-door policy. Rewind the tape and remember, long before it became popular, I stood before the council and complained about Tarlisha Smith practices and restrictions, and how they deny employees' access to opportunities and benefits that council unanimously said it wanted its employees to have. These problems seem to be more deeply rooted in the HR department than Tarlisha Smith. We are becoming increasingly tired and frustrating from begging and waiting for basic, simple, non-controversial access that other municipal employees have, but is being denied by the city of Atlanta HR Department. Soon, it may be time for the mayor and council to step in on what should be straightforward and a routine matter. Be well and do good. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next will be Henry Jordan. You'll have up to two minutes.
Came not to the spirit of God, everyone that's here. At that time, Jesus answered and said, "I thank thee, O Father, Lord of heaven and earth, because thou hast healed these things from the wise and prudent, and as revealed..." and hast revealed them unto babes," Matthew 11, chapter 25, verse 1. If the necessities of temple worship permitted the priests to profane the Sabbath, there was all the more reason why the service of Christ would allow a similar liberty. A so-called "dud" according to the world is not likely to honor Jesus' power. The Lord said, "Until my Lord sit thou at my right hand until I make thy enemies thy footstool," Psalm 110, chapter 1, verse 1. Though a sail by critics is a Davidic authoritization, divine inspiration and messianic interpretation are all assumed by Jesus and the New Testament writers. Only Jesus can make our enemies our footstool. And base things of the world in things which are despised as God chosen, yea, and things which are not, to bring to nought things that are. First Corinthians 1, chapter 28, verse 1. God has chosen the selection by God that is designed to silence the wisdom of man. He chooses the foolish to shame the wise. He chooses the weak things to shame things deemed by man to be mighty and things man do not even realize exist to counteract things which are, are powers and institutions erected and relied upon by man. Christ give me and you answers that a flesh do not agree to. A man's gift maketh room for him and bringeth him before great men, Proverbs 18, chapter 17, verse 1. Reconciliation with an offended brother is difficult. Barriers between friends can arise easily, but destroy it with difficulty. The gift was given to me to glorify Jesus, not men's fleshly glory. The gift is designed for a temporary deliverance planned for his people
Time is expired.
that they need. We need God's protection, man. I know I do.
Thank you. Next will be Brother Mohammed. Due to yielded time, you'll have up to four minutes.
My God met your hotel. I am, that I am. Brother Anthony Mohammed. The brother who recognized his connection to nature, who recognized that we have to give back people to the way of the ancestors who taught civilization. You got in your scriptures, the Bible, the tree of life. The ancient committed ancestors, they taught the energy connection of human beings or the human mind to relationship of nature. Nature has a consciousness in it. Natures have a mind that was already nurtured before material things were created on earth. We're all from the mountain, dog, anti-matter. There's a word called, hey, a lot of commission on women. I was at this commission this morning. And I was really much concerned, as I told you all last time I was here. We live in a time where every city of America got homeless people there. I heard about in Texas, how bad it is in Texas, not including California. But when I come to Atlanta to these meetings, I see the condition of the people that live here. Marla Luther King, Dr. Laura, Naga Evans, Jose Williams, all stood up, took time out of their lives to fight for the condition of just civil rights to go to the school or go to the restroom. But now the 21st century, Mr. Dozier, Mr. Winston, you sassy D.C., getting ready to make $100,000 to tell me. But are you gonna come together and do something for the people that cannot afford housing? You got one bedroom with 15 hundred. You have people that live in the houses for 30 years. And then you got people that have died in some of the houses in some of the neighborhoods. And now they lost their house, couldn't pay the taxes. And you got young people taking these houses. Some of them can't afford it. And you got the owners that own the houses, don't even live in this city of Atlanta. Don't even fix it up. Don't even allow them to have access to research to fix it up. Even I talked to Miss Overstreet about the one got the dogs. They don't even have a gate. I talked about he got cars, a park on the sidewalk. I worked for a year up and down the street talking to the people. Do you want a half sidewalk and half curb? Mr. C. Two, mine. He said, "Brother, I want you to stay on the job. We're gonna work it out." And I told you, Mr. Dozier. And I told you, Mr. Winston. You didn't even finish the work as y'all sit on some of these commit. They need to be finished on terror. You say, "You, Mr. Winston, I just work for my behalf of my people. You need to collaborate. That's what your ancestor did, to collaborate for the benefit of the whole." And as you said, Mr. Boom, the Atlanta Commission on Women's have a board of women that doing some good thing. But they're collaborating, like Ms. Asim said, to have resources so we can get some condition changing for the houses that our people don't have. You made some comments today, but it wasn't what I have been crying out for, that I would be resources today, yesterday, to help these peoples off the street and find ways to come up and do like the man did. But thank you, as I did not. Now I saw that thing went off for me. Now I want to show you some respect, Mr. Shook, before you leave. But then it come back on. So you know, I don't like, man, met your hotel. I should let it come. I say, I say, I say.
Thank you. Next will be Monica Redondo. You'll have up to two minutes.
Yes, my name is Monica Redondo and I'm, that's the first time for me to be here, so I'm not sure how this works. But I'm here because I have been, or we have been experiencing a problem with the procedural practices of the clerks, of the municipal clerk's office in regards to filing quitclaim deeds. It seems like, or that is a fact, that anyone can go to the clerk's office and file a quitclaim deed. So I can just go and have the PT 61 form and the quitclaim deed template completed. And I can say that anyone's property was granted to me and then it's recorded. So, I mean, and that is a problem for many homeowners, of course, because if you might still continue receiving the tax bill, but the property on the record does not belong to you anymore. And I'm in District 2. And I actually wanted to talk to Mr. Faruki, but since he's not part of this group, I don't know who else can help with this because I think it is something that needs to be changed in the, in the system, period. It is in Georgia like this. It's not everywhere. But not in the entire United States, but in Georgia. That's how it works with the quitclaim deeds. And we've been having problems with an individual filing fake quitclaim deeds. And they are just recorded. So we have to go and get an attorney. I mean, it is, it would be great if there's any help from anyone.
Time is expired. Thank you. Next will be Pastor Barbara the Shelter Girl.
She up here on the Capitol Hill. Sorry, City Council.
Sorry.
I ain't been here in two years, but I'm back. And I've been coming a long time for a lot of problems in the Pittsburgh community. I got called in a real estate scam, a broker scam, a foreclosure scam. I had six property on Welp Street and one on Rockwell and one on Metropolitan, which is a church. And this is my last property. I bought my mom when I was 21 years old, age 14. It's just got off the market today. I went to Mark Swain Realty, wanted the 21 deal. It's been five months. I haven't got a guarantee offer in 21 days. I have had two young white men and two older white women have played nothing but games on me. They advertise, "I cannot talk to Mark Swain because I am Mark Swain." I am a millionaire and he's a millionaire. So I want to talk to the, talk to you all and talk to the television station that they are redrolling and playing a game in our community. I can tell you, I got the text and I got the paper. And today, they supposed to come and pick up the sign because they red rolled me from $349,000 to a thousand, I mean, $180,000 and still play games. Come and don't bring no contract. I had to beg and ask for a contract. They changed, I took pictures of it. They changed the date saying I got to January, way more than three months. I had for three months, they said I had a $279 offer. Then Al said, "Well, no, that's a vulgar call." Then I re, tried to sell it for two weeks. I got calls. My neighbors said a whole lot of people coming there, but they only told me I only had two people to look at their house. It's a gang going on. I don't know if it's, I'm not prejudiced. But it's a white supremacists have took over Mark Swain, Smart Swain Realty. And he might not know it. But I'm here to let him know that what they are doing, my property is hot. A lot of people coming to my property and they showing, they get there and they show them another property. And then they say they lose my key. They lost two keys. I got it all on text. Oh, lost my key. And then next thing, you know, my music too loud. They keep showing, they bring it to my house and keep showing them to somebody else's house. Thank you. Somebody get the word back to Mark Swain and all the TV's channels that saying that 21 guarantee offer.
Thank you. Next will be Dontrevius Wilder. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Dontrevius Wilder. And I come before you today as a black resident of Atlanta who loves this city deeply, but cannot ignore the perfidy and banality that historically reeks behind these chambers. I want to begin by commending Mayor Andre Dickens for the appointment of Ms. Teresa Gibson. On the surface, it looks like a positive step, a black woman in a public role. That image matters. However, when I look at the pattern of appointments and rezonings, what I see is not empowerment, but consolidation of power and the perversion of a status quo that continues to displace working black communities. My first concern is the consolidation of districts 1 through 4, post one at large in the appointment of Eva Hightower, Todd Gray, and Adam Parker. Ms. Hightower was appointed by Councilman Dozier, himself a businessman, and her record is soaked in meta-platforms and corporate real estate law. I have to ask, what does it mean when the very people tasked with guiding affordable housing come from institutions that profit from land speculation and corporate development? To me, that is not a coincidence. It is suspicious and it is dangerous. I also have the question plainly, is Invest Atlanta truly investing in the future of black communities or is it investing in our demise? Because when I walk through neighborhoods gutted by gentrification, I see tax incentives and development deals that profit investors, not families. Invest Atlanta Westside Future Fund and this very council, among others, through rezonings, must answer a simple question. Housing for who? Development for who? The MPUs that approve these rezonings are often made up of folks with the privileges to attend meetings in the middle of the day, the same folks who draw through traffic lights while the rest of us are stuck in traffic jams during driving to work. So the community voice you hear is not always the voice of the community most impacted. Those voices, our voices, are drowned out. I say this not just as a resident, but as a son of Georgia soil. My family's roots stretch through Banks County, working in human bondage. My family been here in Atlanta before the gold flame bridge on Hank Aaron and the bike lanes in the bluff, raised by a working single mother of four. She taught me to never be docile, never bow my head or turn my back on the vulnerable. And I say this also as an educator, a graduate of Georgia State University. My role as a
Time is expired.
to tell the truth. My role as a citizen is to demand it from you. Justice for Cornelius Taylor.
Thank you. Next will be Kayla Smith. You have up to two minutes.
My name is Kayla Smith and I work for Women on the Rise as a community and campaign organizer. I'm here to ask again that you all keep the promises made in regard to the stage withdrawal. You don't need more beds. We need to actually use what's already been put in place. Again, why do we invest money into a diversion center if officers are going to choose to underutilize it? There's a culture issue and Patrick Laba is at the center. I can again speak from my own experience with the most unprofessional officers I've ever encountered in my entire life. I can give you some direct quotes from my officers during my arrest. One of them said, "You're not going to the diversion center. You're going to jail." This is a choice that they're making. I just want to know what's the reason? Why do we invest money into this if officers are going to choose to not divert people? Another time, I asked an officer, "What are my charges?" They said, verbatim, "We're not telling you," and proceeded to bust out laughing into my face. On the body cam footage, mind you, I've already am going to jail. I've already had my first charge. The officer is sitting in her car on the body cam footage asking, "Hmm, what else can I charge her with?" Stop overcharging based on emotion. Four out of five of my charges ended up being dropped because they had no substance to them. My bail was significantly higher because I was overcharged with the foolishness that should have never been on there because the officer sat in her car and tried to make up more charges. These are the reasons why the jail is overcrowded, because officers are charging people based off of ego and just for fun and to abuse their power. The overcrowding is a result of terrible policing and overcharging for fun and power trips. Don't let the Board of Commissioners bully you into turning your back on promises that were made because they're trying to pass this expensive mental health facility in jail that we don't need. Listen to the people who implement and study community-based solutions. Why on earth would a sheriff be responsible for staffing a mental health facility? Holding the resolution just gives more time for another Noni Batiste Kosoko or Michael Rivers. They should be alive. Honor the 2022 agreement. Have a formal vote and begin planning. This was never supposed to be permanent. Oh, and please fire Melvin Potter and being wild.
Thank you. Next will be Melody Rosser. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Melody Rosser and I'm here on behalf of Women on the Rise and Community Over Cages. I want you to see things through my lens. I completed a 20-year prison sentence here in Georgia. When I went in, people had beepers and chirp phones. Today, we walk around with many computers in our pocket. Now, I serve as a certified specialist with Grady Behavioral Health. I go into Fulton County Jail in ACDC to support women with serious mental health diagnosis. I help them build transition plans so they have a real chance to succeed once they come home. And let me tell you this. The biggest barrier for the women I serve isn't jobs, it's housing. Imagine stepping out of prison after 20 years, seeing abandoned hotels and office buildings everywhere. And then coming here, hearing billions requested for more jail beds. Atlanta doesn't need more jail beds. Atlanta needs more resources. 80% of the people I see in booking reports aren't violent cases. There are unhoused neighbors criminalized for sleeping outside of business or churches, charged with criminal trespassing or charged with public urination because there are no public restrooms and businesses will not allow them to utilize their facilities. The mayor said, "Atlanta isn't in the jailing business." Well, I can't tell. If we find billions for jail beds, we can find the funds to turn abandoned buildings into housing. We can invest instead of well, into wellness instead of punishment. Atlanta should not be in the jailing business. Atlanta should be in the business of healing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Kimberly Brooks. Due to all the time, you have up to four minutes today.
Good afternoon, council. So today I come before you. I don't want to be here, but I am. My hands are actually tied. Thank God. It's just angry. It's not about religion, but an angry God who hears the prayers of people that you have caused to suffer. Code enforcement, not paying rent and things like that. I shouldn't have to live healthy, unhealthy. Now, let's talk about it. If you want to come up here and get copies of these, you can. But what happened is, is Mr. Shook, what if you just went home? And either of you went home and you came home and you're in your bed sleeping and somebody just threw your personal property out on the ground? You would say, Ms. Brooks, you were evicted, right? That's what you'd say. And I should have been evicted. But code enforcement didn't do their due diligence. Yeah, okay, yes. Let's, I'll have a few. Get one of the councilmen, Lewis, Batiari, and Weston's not here. I'll talk to him later. Yes, so code enforcement came out in 2023 and deemed this property uninhabitable. I'm sorry, Councilman Weston. I saw this here. And the thing is, is I, I went to Shannon Manning-Gold before she left, right? I put this folder in her hand. She could have saved you from me. So what I'm gonna do is, I am my representation. I am the person that's going to represent this. So I'm gonna issue a claim for the city of Atlanta of a total of $130,000 for a claim because you've put my personal items outside on the ground because Edgar Perry doesn't want to go to court. You know why? You know why? You're gonna tell me it's not your problem that I was evicted, because that's a Fulton County issue. I will be in Fulton County tomorrow for their hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So according to your document, you should have charged them up to a thousand dollars per day because code enforcement deemed this property as uninhabitable. They deemed it as uninhabitable, but you let me stay there. Look at the conditions that I was living in. Do I look like I live in those conditions? So what did I try to do? I tried to give you, tried to give you the time. I tried to do this discreetly. You understand? I don't need an attorney. I represent myself pro se. They took me to court, they lost. So what they did is they found a marshal to illegally evict me. Mr. Councilman Dozier, my daughter's boyfriend is in the military. He serves. You put his military work outside on the ground. My children travel the world and I say, bringing me a magnet home every time you travel to another country. Those magnets are in the trash can. My perfume from Dubai that I cannot replace, stolen. This is illegal. Let me put that. So what I did is, you have thirty days. Right now, we're at a hundred and six thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-five times two is seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If I have to sue city council, that's my, how much would it be? Seven hundred and thirty. I'll issue the claim for a hundred and six thousand. That's ten percent because I'm a woman of God and I don't believe in taxpayers paying for the wrong of a landlord. But you were supposed to not have me at that property since 2023, written 2025. Why have I been living there? Because you didn't want to hold that landlord accountable. That landlord should have paid you a seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But since you didn't want to charge these slum landlords, I'm gonna charge you. And every person in this city is gonna do it over the next couple of months, because I'm gonna start a rent strike. I started a consulting firm called Kim Knows Best. I think that's fitting, because I tried to do this discreetly. I'm a good woman, you have no skeletons in my closet. I tried to do this discreetly. Do you understand that? I have everything in order. You will not win. You will lose. May God have mercy upon you.
Thank you. Next will be Nikki Bugs. Due to yield of time, you'll have four minutes today.
At the landmark, the condominium, we've suffered severe safety and life-threatening issues overlooked by the city, the government, the state, government officials, and the agencies. We've suffered a near fatal fire, shootings, stabbings, an individual is expelled from a stairwell window, deaths. Additional reprehensible actions include the fact that the permission of the city and the government officials allowed the landmark to operate as a de facto hotel. Rules and regulations for tourist accommodations enforced by the Georgia Department of Public Health and Safety, DPH. We're omitting the sanitation, facility standards, safety inspections, compliance investigations, and compliance with the sexability codes. You have a duty to intervene, a duty to act. You have the ability to enforce safety standards, to require the public welfare. One of the employees was boastfully proud about sharing money talks, BS walks, that the board president was going to get the building. This person boastfully stated that. This is not a personal grievance. This is a community issue. And I will wait until I get everybody's attention. I just want to make sure that I'm being heard and that you're actually listening. I don't speak for myself, but I also speak for those that are afraid to speak. Thank you, thank you. So sadly and albeit ironically, if you have not done so thus far, I hope you have the intentions to go ahead and pursue this matter. If this matter took place in your very backyards, in your homes, in your neighborhoods, it would not take four-plus years for anyone to stand up to say anything. If this took place in your backyards, this would not take this long for you to act. I'm unclear why your constituents are having to suffer through this. I'm unclear. We have one city councilperson and I think three at large. We've just asked for an audience and to talk. You speak with Amstra, talk to us. This can be worked out, it's just there has to be a medium to it. Thank you much for boldly illuminating the governmental systemic inaction and what it does to your constituents' communities. We're taught to go to officials for help. Go to the police officers for help. And it's similar to when the police officer, you go to the police officer and say, somebody's hurting me. And the officer takes you back to that house and say, this person says you're hurting them. Are you? And the person says, oh, no, 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 I'm not bothering them. And they push you back into the house. This is what's happening with us. This has been an amazing civics lesson, an amazing one. And ultimately, what you're telling us is that we have no leg, we have nobody to go to out of this entire group, out of this entire city, the council, the government. We have no one. We live by the law, we do right by the law, we treat other people well, and this is what we get. So let it be known to the world that there's no intention of taking care of the people that live in your area. It is about the money. It's about the stitch. It's about STR, thriving. It's not how we're losing our homes to these people. Let it be known. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next will be Jalisa Anderson. You'll have up to two minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Jalisa Anderson. I'm a former employee at Municipal Court, the City of Atlanta. I'm a resident of the Lakewood community under Antonio Lewis. Um, I came here to address my wrongful termination from August sixth of this year. I emailed you, um, and, um, it appears my determination came from childbirth, me birthing my, my, my daughter on May twenty-first. Not only that, um, I was a whistleblower last year at their results until Alicia Smith been terminated. It wasn't directly what she did, it was her coming into Municipal Court to help out. I was a whistleblower for, um, the administration team at Municipal Court that was terminated. Um, not only that, I was a whistleblower for the HR here at City Hall that several members was terminated. Um, I was told on my leave by my manager that was removed, um, that he would be being replaced by Pamela Buds, who don't have the experience to be in a manager. I told Rodney Evans, who's the new, um, executive director, that if she become manager, I'd be terminated. She was a court clerk that was in a department that's out for revenge. I stated that, um, June twenty-seventh. I came back to work July tenth. I was wrongly terminated August sixth. I was told I was terminated due to the investigation that took place last year and I sent the email to you, President, um, Shipman. Um, then I had to let her know the investigation closed May first of 2025. Then she stated, well, we're at Will State, you didn't do anything, we just want to let you go. Um, being employed with the city, I've had my civil rights violated, I've been sexually harassed, um, retaliated on for being a whistleblower, and now retaliated on wrongly terminated for childbirth. And I've reached out to HR, who haven't stepped in, the only one that stepped in was Jason Ingram. He's been great. Not only that, President Shipman, your assistant, Jordan, is awesome. Whoever Jordan is, he's great. Um, he stepped in, I feel as if HR now are in their feelings from last year and they have ignored, uh, reinstated me, placed me on administrative leave. I was placed on administrative leave for five months, um, from December. I came back to work this January of 2025.
Time is expired.
And I have a letter here for the mayor, for Antonio Lewis, if he wanted to give it to the mayor.
Councilwoman Lewis, and actually, Jordan's coming down to.
And thank you, and Ms. Anderson. I got your email, also sent it to HR to get some specific answers and asked them to give me a update on the background of that. Lakewood is actually in Councilmember Winston's district.
Okay, it's not, it's not all agree.
But I, it was never District Twelve, actually. It's always been District One, but I've, I'm over there all the time, that's why I've made sure I sent it up to them, but it's always been in District Twelve. A couple of them have been suspended, but I still am, well, he and I worked together on a lot of things. I actually probably included him on that email that I sent. I want to check and see.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for today. I want to thank everyone who came down and, uh, signed up and provided a comment. Next, we'll move to the report of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. I, Corinne A. Lindo, municipal clerk of the City of Atlanta, do hereby certify that the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, August eighteenth, 2025, are true and correct.
If there are no changes or additions to the minutes, I would entertain a motion to adopt. Moved by Councilwoman Batiari, seconded by Juan. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the journal? We can do this via unanimous consent, without objection, any objection. Madam Clerk, please sound the count of unanimous consent on the motion to adopt the journal.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Yeas, zero nays, the motion to adopt the journal carries. Next, we'll move to communications. Madam Clerk.
The first item, Mr. President, is twenty-five C, zero one, zero four. This is a communication from Charis Johnson, president of the League of Women Voters of Atlanta Fulton County, submitting the appointment of Ms. N'Koi NFFing Lewis to serve as a member of the Ethics Board. This appointment is for a term of three years. Staff recommendation to refer to Committee on Counsel.
Let the item follow that course.
Item number two, uh, Mr. President, may I take item two and three as a block?
Without objection, please proceed.
Item number two is twenty-five C, zero one, zero five. This is a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Bettina Terry to serve as a member of the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for the City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of five years. Item number three is twenty-five C, zero one, zero six. This is a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Matt Brothman to serve as a member of the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for the, uh, City of Atlanta. This appointment is for a term of five years. Staff recommendation for both those items is to refer to Community Development Human Services Committee and Committee on Counsel.
Let both items follow that course.
Item number four is twenty-five C, zero one, zero seven. This is a communication from Donald T. Penovi, CPA, Chair Audit Committee, submitting the performance audit report, Atlanta Police Department, body worn cameras, follow-up. Staff recommendation to refer to Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee.
Let the item follow that course.
That, uh, concludes the communications, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any vetoed legislation for consideration?
There are none.
Thank you. There's also no unfinished business held over from the last meeting, so we'll move to the Consent Agenda Section One. Uh, Councilwoman Norwood, before we move there. Oh, hold on just a second, let me announce it and then I'll, I know what you're gonna do. Consent Agenda Section One, these are items that are on page four of the materials. They are items for second reading, therefore the appropriate motion will be to adopt. First, let me ask if there are items to be removed from the Consent Agenda, Councilwoman Norwood.
Yes, would you please remove twenty-five dash R dash thirty-eight eighteen? It's item eight on page twenty.
Twenty-five dash R dash thirty-eight eighteen. Any other items for removal? Councilwoman Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On page twenty-one, item number eleven, which is twenty-five R thirty-eight oh one. Again, page twenty-one, item eleven, twenty-five R thirty-eight oh one.
Twenty-five R thirty-eight oh one. Any other items for removal from the Consent Agenda Section One? If, uh, none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section One with two items removed. Moved by Councilwoman Juan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Norwood. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda Section One with two items removed? Hearing no, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays, the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda carries. Councilwoman Lewis. Councilwoman Lewis, do you want to speak? Sorry, I had, must be from four. My apologies. Uh, next, we'll move to the Consent Agenda Section Two. These are items that begin on page twenty-six. They are items for first reading, therefore the appropriate motion will be to refer. First, let me ask, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda Section Two? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to refer. Moved by Councilwoman Juan, seconded by Councilmember Hillis. Is there any discussion on the motion to refer the Consent Agenda Section Two? Hearing no, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays, the motion to refer carries. Next, we'll move to the report of standing committees. First up today is Finance Exec Chair Shook.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, first up is twenty-five oh fourteen forty-five, ordinance by Public Safety, authorizing the mayor or the CPO on behalf of the city to acquire from the Entrenchment Creek Coalition, Inc., three parcels of land located, uh, at the locations listed for the future expansion of the city's Custer Avenue Combined Sewer Control Facility for a purchase price of ten point nine million dollars, authorizing the mayor or the CPO on behalf of the city to execute all documents necessary to acquire the property, authorizing acquisition, due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolition, site security and stabilization, fencing, and other site development costs to be paid from the fund and account information listed waiving code section cited here, uh, and for other purposes, uh, the motion is to hold in breast of council.
It's a motion by Councilmember Shook, seconded by Councilwoman Winston, to hold twenty-five oh fourteen forty-five in the breast of council. It's not debatable, we'll go straight to a vote. An I vote is to hold in the breast of council. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to hold in the breast of council.
The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays, the motion to hold in the breast of council carries.
Thank you. Twenty-five oh fourteen sixty-three is an ordinance, uh, by Finance Exec, waiving the cited competitive source selection provisions, uh, of the procurement and real estate code of the City of Atlanta, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, to authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Special Procurement Agreement listed Comcast Network Fiber Services with Comcast, Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC, on behalf of AIM and Watershed, and to add the Departments of Fire and Rescue, APD, Parks and Rec, Public Works, Corrections, and the mayor's office as an authorized user, uh, and to extend the term of the agreement for one year effective February twenty-sixth of next year through February twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-seven, and to add funding in an amount not to exceed, um, one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand and ten dollars, all contracts at work to be charged to and paid from, et cetera. This comes forward favorably, uh, with one abstention. Motion is to approve.
Motion coming out of committee to adopt twenty-five oh fourteen sixty-three. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing no, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Motion to adopt twenty-five oh fourteen sixty-three.
Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays, the motion to adopt carries.
Thank you. I'd like to take, uh, the remaining two items as a block, please.
Without objection.
Twenty-five oh fourteen eighty-three is an ordinance by Shook, authorizing the CFO to amend the FY twenty twenty-six budget by adding to anticipations and appropriations bond proceeds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed blank for the Series twenty twenty-five general report revenue bonds to amend the funding for the contracts solicited in Exhibit A and for other purposes. Twenty-five oh fourteen eighty-four, uh, is an ordinance by Shook, supplementing that certain thirty-seven supplemental bond ordinance adopted on the date listed and approved by the mayor on the date listed, to, among other things, set forth the terms of the City of Atlanta, one, airport general revenue bond, Series twenty twenty-five A and B, and any additional sub-series designation is herein permitted, providing funds for the purpose of, among other things, financing and refinancing, in whole or in part, the cost of planning, engineering, design, acquisition, equipping, and construction of certain improvements to Hartsfield-Jackson Land International Airport, providing for a reasonably required debt service reserve, uh, providing for the payment of costs of issuance, including bond insurance, if any, providing for the forms and authorizing the execution of said Series twenty twenty-five, uh, A and B bonds, providing for the rights of the holders of said bonds, authorizing and approving the preparation, use, and distribution of a preliminary official statement and a final official statement in connection with the offer and sale of said bonds, granting the CFO, uh, the city finance officer, or airport general manager
or airport general manager the authority to deem final the preliminary official statement for the purposes of Securities and Exchange Commission Rule listed, and the authority to approve and execute a final official statement, authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and certain other agreements in connection with said bonds, and providing for incidental related actions, providing an effective date, and for other purposes. My motion is going to be to hold these in the breast of counsel so that we may take them up at our special call meeting coming up on the 10th.
The motion by Councilmember Shook, seconded by Councilmember Juan, to hold both of these items in the breast of counsel. There's no discussion on the motion. We'll move straight to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to hold the breast of counsel carries.
That is all.
Thank you, Councilmember Shook. Next up today will be the Committee on Counsel, Chair Collins.
Good afternoon, Mr. Council President. May we take items one, two, and three as a block?
Please proceed.
Item number 25-C-0092, a communication from councilmembers Jason Winston, District 1, Amir Faroki, District 2, Byron Amos, District 3, Jason Dozier, District 4, and Michael Julian Bond, Post One at Large, appointing Ms. Evy Hightower to serve as a member of the Beltline Affordable Housing Advisory Board. This appointment is for a term of two years. Item number 25-C-00942, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Ms. Teresa Austin-Gibbons to serve as Commissioner of the Department of Labor and Employment Services for the City of Atlanta. And item number 25-C-0102, a communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, reappointing Ms. Amber A. Robinson to serve as a member of the Municipal Market Company Board of Directors. This appointment is for a term of two years. These items come favorable out of Committee on Counsel, and their committee is a purview. Accordingly, our recommendation is to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt these three items coming out of the Committee on Counsel. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt these items? Given their communications, be this unanimous consent, any objection to unanimous consent? Madam Clerk, please sound the count. Any unanimous consent on the motion to adopt these items?
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Great, thank you. Item number 25-C-0108, a communication from the municipal clerk, election superintendent Corinne A. Lindo, submitting the applications from six City of Atlanta residents who have applied to fill the District 2 vacancies. Those applicants, I will share their names. It's Brandon Clark, Rod Mack, Darian Smith, Tiffany Simmons, Carden Wyckoff, and Ocean Zatik-Zatnik. Hopefully, I said that correct. And so with that being said, we are asking for this item to be referred back to Committee on Counsel.
Per Section 237.1, it is possible for any nominations to be accepted from any council member on the floor at this time. Are there any additional nominations? Councilmember Lewis?
James White, Attorney James White, District 2. Yes.
James White be, please, added to the list. Any other nominations from the floor? At this time, per the code, I will refer these seven back to COC for review.
We'll circle back to it now. We're just confirming, Mr. President, that Mr. James White qualified as a candidate for District 2. So we'll confirm that now. He did.
One more. Councilmember Lewis?
Quanza Hall. And Quanza Hall.
One more to be added to the applicant list. Quanza Hall, H-A-L-L.
All righty, so we will add Attorney James White and Quanza Hall.
That item will be referred back to COC for review.
Great, thank you.
That's how I help be a conflict of interest for the ban that's granting tax breaks to the billions of the city.
Okay, we'll move forward to our next item. Item number 25-R-3781, a resolution by the Community Development Human Resources Committee, appointing Mr. Adam Parker to the Board of Directors of the Atlanta Development Authority, doing business as Invest Atlanta, as a city council appointee in the real estate sector for a term of four years. Said term to begin upon approval of this resolution and for other purposes. This item comes before us with favorable recommendation from Committee on Counsel and CDHS, and accordingly, our recommendation is to adopt.
There's a motion coming out of committee to adopt 25R-3781. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Councilmember Winston, what is your vote? The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. And our last item, item number 25O-1482, an ordinance by Councilmember Howard Shook to amend the Atlanta City Code, Part 2, the Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Council Division 1 Generally, and Section 2-39, Councilmember Expense Accounts, Council District Appropriations Funding, to remove restrictions on transferring funds between certain accounts and for other purposes. This item also comes before us with favorable recommendation from the Finance and Executive Committee and Committee on Counsel. And accordingly, our recommendation is to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt coming out of committee 25O-1482. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt carries.
Great, thank you so much. That concludes our report, Mr. Council President. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair Collins. Next up will be the zoning committee, Chair Westmoreland.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. We have six items on our report. The first two, without objection, can be taken as a block. The recommendation is to file. 220-1759, Z2277. It's a text amendment to create a new Section 16-18H.004, to create regulations for short-term rentals in the Homestead neighborhood, and 25O-1362U-2519. 2770 Peyton Road Northwest is for especially for a truck terminal. The recommendation is to file.
There's a motion coming out of committee to file 220-1759 and... Is that right? No. Yeah, 1759 and 22O-1362. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to file these two items? Madam Clerk, hearing done. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
One moment. The vote is open. The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to file carries.
Next up is item number 2, 25O-1285, Z2528. It's 2945 Forest Park Road. Its ordinance is rezoned from PDH to I-1. The recommendation coming from committee is too adverse, but I have spoken with the District 12 rep, and I'm going to make a substitute motion to refer back to committee.
There's a motion by Councilmember Westmoreland to refer 25O-1285 back to the zoning committee. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Lewis. Any discussion on the motion to refer?
There was some confusion around this legislation. The MPUZ chair actually spoke with the MPUX chair, something that's never happened, because they've never had another MPU actually involve themselves in a different MPU and be so wrong with the misinformation. But so there was a conversation this weekend. So we're going to send it back to make sure that we can do this, to make sure that we can clear up some of the misinformation from misinformation campaign that went out. Thank you again.
Any other discussion on the motion to refer? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to refer this item.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to refer carries.
Without objection, we can take items 3, 5, and 6 as a block. The recommendation will be too adverse.
Please proceed.
25O-1307, Z2548. It's a text amendment waiving the distance requirements for a service station located at 2836 Lakewood Avenue Southwest. 25O-1468, Z2517, 590 Cedar Avenue Northwest is to rezone from R4 to R4B. And 25O-1471, Z2503, is 1138 Glenwood Avenue Southeast is to rezone from R4BL to NC2 Beltline. Recommendation coming from committee is too adverse.
There is a recommendation coming out of committee to adverse these three items. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adverse these three items? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adverse.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adverse these three items carries.
Thank you. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Chair Westmoreland. Next up today will be Public Safety Legal Administration, Chair Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a report today.
Thank you. Next up will be City Utilities Committee, Chair Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Please turn to page 56 of your full council agenda for the Standing Committee Report for City Utilities for item number one. A 25011147, item one, an ordinance by City Utilities Committee authorizing the mayor or his designate to accept U.S. Environmental Protection Agency EPA's Solar For All Program Grant, funding to have the Capital Good Fund in the amount of $2,000,000.00 for the purpose of implementing upgrades and repairs that enable solar energy projects, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 Intergovernmental Grant Fund to anticipate and appropriate the grant funds, authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into agreements to accept the grant as a...to implement the grant project and for other purposes. Motion to file.
There's a motion coming out of committee to file 25O-1447. Does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to file carries.
Thank you, number 2, 25R-3818, item eight, page 20. A resolution by councilmembers Destiny Hillis and Barry Norwood is amended by the City Utilities Committee to amend the Infrastructure Sustainability Task Force established by Resolution 24R4311 to modify its membership and for other purposes. Motion to amend, to remove the Fourth Whereas Clause to my name in the Now Therefore Be Resolved Clause. Motion to adopt is amended.
So there's a motion... You're making a motion to amend, to remove the Fourth Whereas Clause, and to remove your name, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend by Councilmember Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Norwood. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend this item? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to amend.
The vote is open. The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to amend carries.
And, Council President, thank you so much.
Councilmember Lewis, I think you want to make a motion to adopt as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended.
There's a motion by Councilmember Lewis to adopt as amended, 25R-3818. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Norwood. Any discussion on the motion to adopt as amended?
I just wanted to say for the record that Lake Charlotte is going to get its own task force to do this exact same thing in Southside, and I have offered to be helpful in setting that up the way that we have set up the one that is very specific to District 8.
And I also want to say that super thankful for the conversations, the many conversations we've had with Councilmember Norwood, both in the past and in the present over the weekend, to figure out how we can help increase the capacity, increase what we're doing on the south side of the city. Last week, we were able to give awards, statewide awards, to certain water departments, and I want to make sure all of our watershed departments get it. So to see the intentional focus that Councilmember Norwood and his task force have done on the north side, on northwest side, have improved our city greatly. So I wanted to be a part of that as a flower on the wall. So thankful we're going to bring this to the south side.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion on the motion to adopt as amended? Hearing none, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt 25R-3818.
The vote is open. The votes close, thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. The motion to adopt submitted carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. Next up will be CDHS. There was one item removed from the consent agenda.
Yes, Councilmember Juan, I think you... Don't do that. Yes. I need to get the caption.
So, CDHS report, Chair Winston.
Thank you. So, the item that was pulled off the consent agenda is 25-R-3801 on page 21. This is item 11. A resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier authorizing the mayor or his designate on behalf of the City of Atlanta to designate the City of Atlanta as a bee-free zone and to support intercity urban agriculture and all its programs, and authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into any required agreements for participation in implementation of such designation and for other purposes. We thought this item was filed in committee, but apparently it was not, so I will... Yes.
Just, not to correct you, Councilmember Winston, but it's a bee-trap-free zone, not a bee-free zone.
Bee-trap.
There is a big difference.
Got it, sorry. There was a pink piece of...
So, the bee-trap-free zone. So, there's a motion to adopt coming out of committee, but now we're... Discussion on the 25R-3801, Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Collins, this is my paper. And after significant consultation with my colleague, our fellow on-call beekeeper on our body, I felt that this legislation is okay to be filed. So actually, we'll move to file. We thought we did it in committee, but somehow it lived to see the other day.
All right, there's a motion to file by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Juan. Is there any discussion on the motion to file this item? Hearing done, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to file.
The vote is open.
Winston is an aye.
Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? The votes close, 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to file carries.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Finally today, Transportation Committee Chair Amos is not here, so Vice Chair Overstreet, Transportation Committee.
Transportation Committee does not have a report. Completed our work.
That concludes the report of the standing committees. Next, we'll move to personal papers. We have one for immediate consideration today. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item for immediate consideration. This is Elms number 38630. A resolution by Councilmember Jason Dozier authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute special procurement agreement, SPPS OCA 25081260028 Windsor and Rawson Mural with Living Walls, the City Speaks Incorporated, on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs pursuant to Section 2-119.1.1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances for a term of one year in amount not to exceed $178,785, let me re-say that, $178,785.0 cents for the purposes of unique public artwork mural at the intersection of Windsor Street Southwest and Rawson Street Southwest. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other, for other purposes. Whereas the City of Atlanta is committed to providing the public with rich and diverse cultural experiences and fostering a sense of pride in its neighborhoods. And whereas the city is invested in providing access to the highest caliber artwork for all its citizens by placing works of international and local significance in public sphere. And whereas the Moving Line of Forward Infrastructure bond allocated $5 million for public art products around the city. And whereas the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs identified the need for a creation of a public artwork at the intersection of Windsor Street Southwest and Rawson Street Southwest in the City of Atlanta. And whereas Living Walls, the City Speaks, is a public one C3 nonprofit organization based in Atlanta, Georgia, that creates inclusive, intentional, thought-provoking public art to inspire social change. And whereas Office of Cultural Affairs seeks to engage Living Walls to create a public artwork mural estimated at 10,000 square feet at the intersection of Windsor Street Southwest and Rawson Street Southwest. And whereas in accordance with code, Section 2-119.1.1 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, the Chief Procurement Officer determined that a special procurement for the purpose of providing public art and monumental services is appropriate. And whereas the Chief Procurement Officer in the Office of Cultural Affairs recommended entering into a special procurement agreement, numbers listed herein, and Rawson Mural with Living Walls, the City Speaks Incorporated, for a term of one year in amount not to exceed $178,785.0 cents. And whereas the Chief Procurement Officer certifies that any organizational and personal relationships disclosed by Living Walls have been considered in accordance with Section 2-1214 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, and that award of the agreement is appropriate and now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, that the mayor or his designate is authorized to execute special procurement agreement, SP so forth Windsor and Rawson Mural. With Living Walls, the City Speaks Incorporated, on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs in amount not to exceed $178,785.0 cents for the purpose of providing public artwork at the intersection of Windsor Street Southwest and Rawson Street Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia. Be further resolved that the term of the agreement will be for one year with zero renewal options. Be further resolved that all contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the following account, 31632022A1GO, I'm sorry, general obligation public improvement, in public, general obligation public improvement bonds, task number 405. Be further resolved that a Chief Procurement Officer in consultation with the city attorney is directed to prepare all appropriate documents by, for execution by the mayor or his designate. Be finally resolved that the agreement will not become binding upon the city, and the city shall incur no obligation or liability under the same until it has been approved as to form by the city attorney for, or her designate, executed by the mayor or his designate, attested to by the municipal clerk, and delivered to Living Walls, the City Speaks Incorporated. Colleagues, this item is something that our office has been working with, Office of Cultural Affairs and the Mayor's Office for the last three and a half years, to be honest. If y'all are headed to downtown down Windsor Street before it becomes Terry Turner Drive or are turning on the I-20, y'all probably have seen this large retaining wall that is at the foot of where we're going to be building the 405 Cooper Housing Project. This has been a project that we've been advocating for a long time, that we were able to work well to identify funding. We've selected an artist. We've selected a piece. The time sensitivity of this is that the weather is getting cooler and fewer opportunities to get this mural up and, and moving forward are dwindling as the weather starts to get colder. And so unfortunately, this legislation was not ready before our last council meeting, which is why we weren't able to discuss it at committee. However, I want to go ahead and get this project moving forward as quickly as possible, considering we've been working on this for the last three and a half years. So with that, I wanted to make a motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dozier to adopt Elms 38630, seconded by Councilmember Bakhtiari. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Hearing done, move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to adopt.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The votes close, 13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion to adopt carries.
I'd like to motion to move to the Mayor's Office post haste.
It's a motion by Councilmember Dozier, seconded by Councilmember Hillis to move this item to the Office of the Mayor post haste. Is there any discussion on the motion to move this, on the motion to move this item post haste? We do this via unanimous consent without objection. Any objection? Madam Clerk, please sound the count and unanimous consent on the motion to move this item post haste.
13 yays, 0 nays.
13 yays, 0 nays, the motion move post haste carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, I don't believe we have any other immediate consideration items, so we'll move to items for referral. And Councilmember Dozier, you're still up.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item here, not for immediate consideration, is Elms number 38701. An ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier to amend the 1982 Atlanta zoning ordinance as amended by prohibiting the use of barbed wire and razor wire along public rights away in all zoning districts and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38701 will be referred to the zoning committee.
Next item is Elms number 38702. An ordinance by Councilmember Jason Dozier to waive SEC 15x07.006 of the land subdivision ordinance of the City of Atlanta for the purposes of facilitating and acknowledgement of the 1317 Brookes Street Southwest as two separate lots substantially consistent with the historic configuration and prevailing plat pattern and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38702 will be referred to the CDHS committee.
That's sure, that's all I have. Mr. President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Bakhtiari.
Thank you, Council President. Elms ID 38708, a resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $10,000.0 cents to the East Atlanta Community Association, Inc. to support civic interest in arts programming in Brownwood Park in East Atlanta and authorizing the chief financial officer to make payment from the account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38708 will be referred to the CDHS.
Thank you. Elms ID 38710, resolution by Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari to amend Resolution 25-R-3591 adopted by the City Council on July 1, 2025, and approved by Operation of Law on July 16, 2025, authorizing the contribution of a total amount not to exceed $20,646.0 cents to the Historic District Development Corporation to support the commercial, economic, financial, industrial, and civic interests within the Old Fourth Ward to correct the funding amount and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38710 will be referred to the CDHS committee. Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I have Elms ID number 38680. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond waiving Part II of the Court of Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division 4, the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, to authorize the mayor or his designate to exercise the second renewal option for agreement RFPC 1200560A, annual contract for sanitary sewer repairs with Ruby Collins SC Consortium Point Venture Agreement, I'm sorry, Joint Venture Agreement on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year retroactively affected from September 1, 2025 through August 31, 2026, for a time on, for a time only to authorize the mayor or his designate to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement retroactively effective beginning September 1, 2025 through the exercise of the second renewal option and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38680 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Next is Elms ID number 38688. An ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond waiving Part II, Code of Ordinances, General Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code, Division of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to authorize the mayor or his designate to exercise the second renewal option for agreement, annual contract for sanitary sewer repairs with Rockdale Pipeline Incorporated, Intrigo Municipal Services Corporation JV, agreement on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year retroactively affected from September 11, 2025 through September 10, 2026, for time only to authorize the mayor or his designate to ratify services rendered in connection with the agreement retroactively effective beginning September 11, 2025 through the exercise of the second renewal option and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38688 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Boone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elms ID number 38681. A resolution by Councilmember Andrea Boone to amend Resolution 25-R-32221 adopted by the Atlanta City Council on March 17, 2025, and approved per City Charter, Section 2403 on March 18, 2025, to clarify the not-to-exceed amount of the contract and the city's share of that cost and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38681 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee. Councilmember Collins.
Yes, coming right up. Thank you. Elms ID number 38682. A resolution by Councilmember Ishay Collins authorizing the mayor or his designate to exercise a third renewal option under IFB-S-121276 Trace Organic Laboratory Services with Eurofence Environment Testing Southeast LLC on behalf of the Department of Watershed Management for a term of one year effective October 5, 2025 through October 4, 2026, any amount not to exceed $138,000.0 cents. All contracted work to be charged to and paid for from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38682 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Great, thank you. Elms ID number 38686. An ordinance by Councilmember Ishay Collins authorizing the mayor or his designate to execute the First Amendment for special procurement agreement, SP-S-122036 Solidways Parcel Survey and Billing Software Support and Maintenance with International System Strategies Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Public Works to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis for a period not to exceed nine months to waive Article 10 of the City of Atlanta Procurement and Real Estate Code to add funding in the amount not to exceed $315,000.0 cents to ratify services in connection with the agreement retroactively effective September 29, 2025 through the exercise of the First Amendment. All contracted work to be charged to and paid for from the fund, department, organization, and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
38686 will be referred to the City Utilities Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Council President.
Councilmember Hillis.
First item is Elms number 38707. A resolution by Councilmember Dustin Hillis requesting the mayor or his designate to make the intersection of Anton Street Northwest and Forest Street Northwest an all-ways stop control intersection to request the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at the intersections and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38707 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID 38684. An ordinance by Councilmember Dustin Hillis waiving Part II, Chapter 2, Article 10, Division 14 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances authorizing the exchange of property at 1370 Howe Mill Road Northwest for property owned by Atlanta Beltline, Inc. at 1396 Howe Mill Road Northwest and 1400 Howe Mill Road Northwest, authorizing the grant of temporary construction easements and permanent easements across city-owned property located at 1370 Howe Mill Road Northwest, and authorizing the purchase of the City of Atlanta's interest in certain property located at 1370 Howe Mill Road Northwest so as to provide for the construction of the Atlanta Beltline project and related improvements to the intersection of Howe Mill Road Northwest and Trabert Avenue Northwest. To authorize the mayor or his designate, the chief procurement officer or her designate to execute and/or deliver all other documents necessary to complete the exchange, easements and sale and transfer of the aforementioned property, authorizing the revenue from the disposition to be deposited in the fund and account information listed herein, authorizing acquisition due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolition, site security and stabilization, fencing, and other site development costs to be paid from the fund and account information listed herein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38684 will be jointly referred to the CUC and CDHS committees.
Please, my items, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis. Councilman Lewis.
And thank you, President. A Elms 38705. A resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis requesting the Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to conduct a traffic calming study on Wayne's Court Southeast to determine the need for any safety improvement measures such as traffic calming devices, reduced speed, or stop signs and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38705 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
Elms ID 38709. A resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis. A resolution requesting that the mayor or his designate reduce any unnecessary restrictions on the ability of members of the public to petition their government and access City of Atlanta services at Atlanta City Hall through taking whatever action shall be necessary to provide some ability for members of the public for members of the public to park at or near Atlanta City Hall free of charge and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38709 will be referred to the Transportation Committee.
And a really good piece of legislation for the southeast quadrant of Atlanta, South Side, Elms 38706, a resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis and Jason H. Winston and Councilmember Michael Julian Bond, Councilmember Ishay Collins, Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Councilmember Jason Dozier as well. A resolution requesting the Office of Contract and Compliance in coordination with the Department of Law and the Department of Finance to conduct an audit of the Lakewood Amphitheater Lease Agreement with Live Nation Entertainment, Incorporated, including payments to the Community Benefit Agreement Fund and to report findings and recommendations to the Atlanta City Council and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38706 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee. Councilmember Norwood.
Elms 38703, a resolution by Councilmember Mary Norwood, authorizing the City of Atlanta to donate a total not to exceed $100,000 from the District 8 discretionary account to the Spring Lake Civic Association pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's charter to authorize the Chief Financial Officer or his designate to make the donation authorized hereby from the accounts listed therein and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38703, we refer to the Finance Exec Committee. Councilmember Overstreet.
Elms ID number 38704, a resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet and Matt Westmoreland and Liliana Bakhtiari, authorizing a donation to neighborhood in need and support of emergency home repairs for legacy residents in order to help prevent displacement pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's charter and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38704 will be referred to the FEC. Councilmember Shook.
Elms 38626, ordinance by Shook to amend the Charter of the City of Atlanta as cited under and by the authorities cited by amending the sections cited to update the requirement for budgeted anticipations not to exceed 99% of the normal revenue collected during the previous year to amend Part 1, Subpart A, Article 6, et cetera, to update the process for budget amendments and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38626 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
Thank you. Elms 38638, ordinance by Shook, amending the FY26 general fund budget by anticipating and appropriating an amount not to exceed blank from the Council President and Council Carryforward Accounts with a net amount of blank to be returned to the Council President and Council Carryforward Accounts for the true-up of FY26 carryforward balances and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38638 will be referred to the Finance Exec Committee.
That is all.
Councilmember Juan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Elms ID 38711, in ordinance by Councilmembers Alex Wan and Mary Norwood, in ordinance to amend Part 3 Land Development Code, Part 20 Short Term Rental, Section 20-1003, to clarify that the definition of short-term rental shall exclude accommodations which are not made available to the general public and which are reserved for use through a contractual agreement between the property owner and a third party, which shall be for a term exceeding 30 days and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38711, we refer to the Community Development Human Services Committee. Councilwoman Winston.
Thank you, Council President. Elms ID 38713, in ordinance by Councilmember Winston, authorizing pursuant to Section 6-306 of the City of Atlanta's charter and the City of Atlanta to donate $17,370,000 to the Grant Park Neighborhood Association on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to help support the Burn Street Southeast and Mercer Street Southeast Bike Way Project at Parkside Elementary and for other purposes.
Elms ID 38713 will be referred to the CDHS committee.
Thank you.
Are there any other papers for referral today? Okay, hearing none, we will move to general remarks. First, let me just take personal privilege for a moment for a couple of announcements regarding upcoming elections. Just a reminder to everyone, October 6 is the last day to register to vote in time for the November 4 municipal elections. Redistricting changes for the City of Atlanta will go into effect for this November's election, including the new lines. Fulton County has mailed out new and updated voter registration cards to all affected citizens. If you have questions at all about which district or which area you should be voting in, please visit the My Voter page online or call the municipal clerk's office at the City of Atlanta for any assistance. Please get out there and vote. So with that, other general remarks. Councilmember Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to announce that our office is partnering with the Atlanta VA. We're hosting their annual Operation Revelry event at Dunbar Neighborhood Center in Mechanicsville. This event is intended to provide a variety of resources to veterans experiencing homelessness. There will be multiple vendors in the community who will join to provide services, including barbers, mobile showers, and live music, as well as housing resources and other agencies will be there as well. This event will be September the 10th, which I believe is next Wednesday, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Once again, it'll be at Dunbar Neighborhood Center in Mechanicsville, so probably partnering with the Atlanta VA for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Winston.
Thank you, Council President. Two things. First, just want to thank our public service personnel throughout the City of Atlanta. We had several major events in town this weekend. They were working around the clock, keeping our city safe, and sending a special shout-out to the Department of Public Works Fortification Team. I ran into several members over the weekend that were keeping our streets safe. And then secondly, I want to send a happy early birthday to my daughter Banks, who will be five this weekend.
Happy birthday. Councilman Boone.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to congratulate the CFO of the Year Mohammed Bala, named from the Atlanta Business Chronicle. Congratulations. We attended a wonderful celebration for him on last week. It was very well-attended from members of the Atlanta community and beyond. So congratulations, CFO of the Year Mohammed Bala.
Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to announce that the ATL Fresh and Free Drive-Thru Food Giveaway will be tomorrow, September 3, at 2 p.m. at the Mount Olive Baptist Church, located at 2685 Barge Road. So we encourage everyone to come out, come out early, and if you don't need the help, please spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I let folks know and invite folks out to the Pittsburgh Community Jazz Fest hosted Saturday, September 20, 2005, at the Pittsburgh Yards. Also to the South Side Jazz Fest that will be hosted at South Atlanta High School. So two jazz fests coming up on the South Side, both in the month of September. Also want to congratulate Marinatha Seven Day Adventist Church on their 49th anniversary of service to District 12. So thank you again, President.
Thank you. Any other general remarks before we close out? Madam Clerk, please sound the adjournment roll call.
Council President Doug Shipman.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Post 2 at Large. Councilmember Ishay Collins, Post 3 at Large. Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District 1. Councilmember Byron D. Amos, District 3. Councilmember Jason Dozier, District 4. Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District 5. Councilmember Alex Wan, District 6. Councilmember Howard Shook, District 7. Councilmember Mary Norwood, District 8. Councilmember Dustin Hillis, District 9. Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, District 10. Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet, District 11. Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District 12.
Present.